All right. The York County Council of Representatives, Mayor, 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 Mayor.
Good day.
I'm Mr. Adam Toll, here with the leaders of the community, Sam Carroll's plea.
That's correct. Dear Lord, thank you for this time together, Lord. Thank you for the privilege and the freedom that we have to join together and have these meetings go up the bridge for each one of us here to make the right decisions for the county and for all the citizens, Lord. Thank you, King, and Chief now for.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clay Garner. Aubrey Harris.
Here.
David McCullough.
Here.
Chad Belton.
Here.
Terry McCormick.
Here.
Brian Sid. Pamela Carroll.
Here.
Jimmy Hollingsworth. Tricia Underwood.
Here.
Keith Jernigan.
Here.
Jay Weatherford.
Here.
Adam Toll.
Here.
Brenda Colley.
Here.
Philip Hollingsworth.
Here.
Jimmy Ray. Jeff Kelly.
Here.
Nicky Moore.
Here.
Brad Hunt.
Here.
Doug Knight.
Here.
Willie Taft.
Here.
All right, we do have a forum, and we thank everybody for being here tonight. So. We have a copy of the minutes provided there below you, during the edition or collection for the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Sam Carroll, according to the minutes presented in the second.
Second.
Second, Willie Taft, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, everyone in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We have a citizen Frankie Hill or Jimmy Forside in the audience tonight. Frankie Hill or Jimmy Forside, they have to be placed on the agenda. Has anybody raised the case? We'll move on to committee reports.
Mayor, I must have missed it. Was I approving the September minutes and the special call meeting?
Just may have all been.
Okay.
Committee reports.
Highway committee. Everybody should have their notes and things. First item was the transfer of $798,000, $798,628.70 from capital outlay fund over line on 176 to line out on 131. And that's the money that was put aside to buy the equipment and things, put it where it can spend. So our recommendation was that be approved, so I can make a motion to approve the transfer of the funds from line of 176 to budget to line of 131. Second.
The motion from David is second, but Keith Jernigan is in the right.
Yeah. My name's 33, I was just.
So everyone's telling, and of course, the budget committee has already looked at this also and provided the same recommendation, right, Dave?
Yes, sir.
All right. Does everybody understand the motion, the second? Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
The next item we discussed was the surplus equipment sale, his proceeds, and that was $60,745. And then, on the paving, state aid paving, he had $89,000 left in the state aid paving fund from the state. And it's going to receive the $246,000 this year. And that will be the end of his state aid. Most of that money comes from WILs from gasoline tax, which is not pretty much state state. And he's planning on trying to pave Archer and Shannon Road if the weather gets too cool, if the state approves those to be paved, and they will, those are currently chipping sale, and a length of them, they will have to go back and chip and save, but that won't be enough money to do hot mix on them. That's $110,000 a mile. We had some discussion about the wheel tax. Before, everybody runs out of here and says, we're going to pass a wheel tax, need to listen. With background, while the budget time came this past year, it was about me and a, what was it, me and a head short. And we've worked through the mine for this year. And his funding comes from some property tax, and some, and the rest of it comes from state shared gas taxes, which is not keeping pace with cost. And basically, to, if you pay the wheel, if you put a wheel tax on to cover that deficit, that would be $75. If you want to give extra money, you would go up for that. And no decision was made on that, or discussing it, and committee wanted to meet again another pretty soon with attorneys, they're going to talk some of this over about the wheel tax, and about the, making the resolution, I'm not sure about all the things. So that was, be later. And then, we had several discussions with Tommy Harden from Mickey area about Taylor Road, and they live on Nichols Road, there's a short stretch that's in the, the city says is theirs, not theirs, the county says is not theirs, and it's not on the road list. It's basically one of the roads that one group says they're not, it's not theirs, the thing, another one don't. And basically, we give her information about our road list and what lived the roads, and she was going to go into research and stuff about the city of Mickey. And I did ask the, Mr. Smith, to send out a new road list, road list, so no law commissioners, special road board don't have one, and it had a little while since he sent one out, and the list ever rode to live. All the county, it's been on there for years, along the county road list. Then the last item, which we can't have anything about, was discussion about what the state was planning on doing on 45 South, start the first project in 2025, and then 2027, about reconstructing that road. So that concludes that. Now, we had emergency service meeting, and on the agenda was two surplus tankers, and was given information, said that people have been contacting the county and nobody wanted them. There's a proposal made about transferring over to Ingle and Hornsby. Before I make any kind of motion, I've heard talk that there are people being calling county commissioners about this, concerns, or other folks wanting, and nobody has contacted me. So before I make, bring anything further, I would like to know if there's any valuable commission, road commission has been addressed about this, or had complaints about.
I have. I want to bring up that I made the motion that night with the subcommittee meeting to approve the transfer of both those tankers from Lawton and Beauty Hill, based on the criteria that all of the fire departments in McNairy County have been contacted, and that there was limited replies, no replies, and it was confirmed that there was no interest in McNairy County. All I want to do is make sure that that is still correct when we're moving toward the vote.
Okay.
I've been informed that there's, maybe that wasn't the case, but I don't have anything. Is Steve here tonight?
He's out of town, won't be back. My suggestion is, if there's no objections, I would like us to reconsider that motion, send it back to committee for reconsideration, be reviewed, make sure all the data is right before we get into doing this.
You got a form on the motion?
Well, that did come from a committee member that voted for it in that subcommittee.
Make the motion.
Okay, please, second.
Second.
Takes two thirds, super majority.
David, I think she's good.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to get into a big discussion about this now, but there's problems, so I'd have a, where we've got plenty of time, get all information, all parties together, and work through this. So my intention is not to do anything now, schedule another meeting, discuss it, and come to some kind of agreement or understanding. Any other comments?
Well, most in a second.
I don't know, Keith Jernigan, second to vote.
Any questions? That's the most in a second. Hearing none? Well, I guess we need to take a little pause, make sure it's two thirds, and go in.
Now, this is to send it back to the emergency service committee.
Yes, sir.
For reconsideration.
Aubrey Harris.
Yes.
David McCullough.
Yes.
Chad Belton.
Yes.
Terry McCormick.
Yes.
Pamela Carroll.
Yes.
Tricia Underwood.
Yes.
Keith Jernigan.
Yes.
Jay Weatherford.
Yes.
Adam Toll.
Yes.
Brenda Colley.
Yes.
Philip Hollingsworth.
Yes.
Jeff Kelly.
Yes.
Nicky Moore.
Yes.
Brad Hunt.
Yes.
Doug Knight.
Yes.
Willie Taft.
Yes.
All right, all of you down, let's go. Motion carries. Anything else, David?
All right. Ag committee meeting. All of you have a package, and I'm not going to read through all of this stuff, but kind of the highlights, you've got all the more of a breakdown in there. And the profit of the Pride Pie Festival was $56,933.56. And then the Motor Cross event, $4,010.15. And that came from concession sales, correct, Mr. Knight?
And rent. Concession sales and rent.
Yeah, because that rental was rented out, and I was expecting only the rent. And on the note of that one, that person has also looked a book, and again, come back next year to the same event. So that will be a return of being a burden, even over a stupid. Then we discussed the ice skate panel bids. And that was global synthetic ice for $66,375. And our match would be $16,594 for the purchase price. And the motion was made and carried manusually to proceed with that bidding. The budget committee, oh, look at that.
Yes, sir. We made the same recommendation, you know?
So I can make a motion that the purchase of the ice panel bids to global ice sit stated, be approved, to make a motion to approve that.
I got a question about the bid on that. This is their final bid price, the $66,375, correct?
Yes.
Is this the breakdown of their bid?
It is. The question was asked about the accessories to go with that, that could be purchased at some point. So he sent me that, just kind of to show if you wanted to buy ice skates, if you wanted to buy stations, put them in, if you want to buy a sharpener, sharpener with. The question was asked about the bidding.
So out of these line items on here, which one will be being approved from the, the top line?
No, that, that's the first bid, it's only the panel, the $66,375.
That's not included right here?
No, the panel at the top of that, I think if you look at it, right there, the top of the panel at the top. But that other stuff is, there's like 100 skates in that package that he quoted there. I don't remember who asked for that, but one, one member asked for that, so we got that for them. Because you can order any one, any package you want, you don't have to order that particular package. So you can order 50, or you can order 100, you can order whatever you want.
So this quote right here does not include the panels that we're going to be voting on?
No, the panels on the top, $66,375.
Yeah, right here.
Yeah.
And did they send one of these quotes with that price denoted at the bottom?
No.
They didn't?
No. But the idea was, they wanted to know what the accessories would cost, and that's kind of what they were.
I got a question. This particular, we're looking at global synthetic ice, is that correct?
Well, they were the lowest bid.
Okay. All right. My next question is, if you buy the panels, the number that's over here is 67, is this the complete quote?
That's not even the quote we're voting on.
That is the quote, $66,375, I believe.
But it says $67,423 at the top, and not $66,275.
I don't want to wind that up there like that.
Yeah, that, this quote is misleading.
That's probably where he just gave us the budget estimate for the grant, start with, when he quoted it.
All right, here's my question. What is mandated, other than the purchase of those particular, it says $190 a sheet on the breakdown? Now, if the total is $66,375, I understand that. Is there going to be, obviously, any type of setup, any type of transportation? I guess what I want to know is, can you confirm that that price?
That's the turnkey price.
Turnkey price, ice panels delivered to the event center, set up, ready to go?
Yes, sir. The only thing, it doesn't include any bumper pads, doesn't include any, like, the bike rack that we already have, you put bike racks around it, something like that.
Is that something we'll have to get in the future?
No, we got the bike racks already, we have them.
About the bumper pads, we have to get those?
Well, he said you can buy carpet, if you want to put carpet down, but you need something just for them to get off of the ice on to the floor, so they don't slip and slide on that, something.
So if we vote on approving this, is, you know, we're just voting on that specific dollar figure, or we're going to approve QT 20, 12, 10?
The only thing that's in the grant, in the grant, is the $66,375, I wonder if that figure is, that's all we're going to vote on tonight. That other is information for whoever asked for it.
Yeah, but you said, if you look at it, I mean, you see $67,000 at the top, and then you start adding all the other figures up. It's been nice we have one that says $67,375.
You remember that? You sent me that.
I'm sorry, sorry, I didn't mean.
That $57,000 he's talking about, we got, it's on top of that, those accessories he said he wanted, is what it is. I don't, but the bid is $66,375.
But that current bid is not in this package, correct?
No, it's on the other side.
Yeah, that's it. That is the quote.
I got one other question. Mayor, you, Valerie, when these come in, are they going to go on the existing floor that's being put out currently?
Correct. They're about a half inch thick though, before they were.
But they've got to have that subfloor out there.
That's right. They'll be put out like at Christmas, at the back of the living, with the bike racks put around them, keep that metal on and stuff, but, yeah, that's what we get.
And our total, our total commitment or obligation is $16,594, is that correct?
Whatever the math you do, I guess, do the math, I said about $17,000 is what I said.
Somebody, somebody made that comment, $16,594.
Total minutes of the committee.
That's on the minutes of the, our meeting we voted on. That was the figure from the night, from the meeting.
Yeah, I was just curious, I just saw this about the sharpening. Are we going to be held responsible if anything happens?
What do you mean?
Chopping skates? We going to get in that business?
I don't want to part of the package, we want to do it, you know?
So we haven't, we haven't made any decisions about any of that, as far as buying skates for one time a year versus leasing somebody or getting a builder just to come in and rent them out. That has not, all this was just buying the panels to have them, and to be used for other things, too.
Did you not just say that it included 100 skates?
No, no.
Just panels.
So if we buy ice skate panels, we're probably going to need to buy some skates and all of the stuff.
We regular skates will work on those panels, your regular ice skates will work if you, if kids have ice skates, they work.
We just want to know what extra, when we asked for this other, when the budget committee asked for this other information, I would just want to know what the other cost was going to be, the way we're looking at it. Sort of a way we know kind of a, a whole idea of if we did this, what we're going to be, because it's more than just the panels.
Should we put it all together, so we got a clear idea of what it's going to entail of getting to the ice skating rink business?
Right.
You know, I mean, if it's $67,000, then looking at another 40, 50,000 for all the miscellaneous accessory, that stuff adds up quick. Maybe just double it the time you, you got panels sitting there, but if you don't buy the other $60,000 worth of stuff, they just going to sit there.
But there is a, there is an option to lease, rent the skates, correct?
Yes, sir, there are companies that do that.
So we wouldn't necessarily have to buy the skate if we wanted to, you can just rent them.
Yeah. That was your answer to the question, you know?
Yeah, that's all, we just want to know, I just want to know, I asked the question, I just wanted to know what the other cost we were looking at, if we did it, you know?
Well, we voted on buying the panels tonight.
Right.
Yeah.
Second.
You made the motion, David, and Willie seconded the motion. Everybody understand that's only the panels, about $66,375. Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
No.
Four and O, is that it? I have a dog on me.
Aubrey Harris.
Yes.
David McCullough.
Yes.
Chad Belton.
No.
Terry McCormick.
Yes.
Pamela Carroll.
No.
Tricia Underwood.
No.
Keith Jernigan.
Yes.
Jay Weatherford.
Yes.
Adam Toll.
Yes.
Brenda Colley.
Yes.
Philip Hollingsworth.
No.
Jeff Kelly.
Yes.
Nicky Moore.
Yes.
Brad Hunt.
Yes.
Doug Knight.
Yes.
Willie Taft.
Yes.
Twelve to four, the vote, so motion carries. David, you have anything else?
Okay. The information presented about the production for the skate, for the stage, lighting, and other miscellaneous items for the setting up for the concert, and after discussion, that panel discovered everything improper, the bids were not handled properly, and it came back, and so they were deemed invalid, and that will have to be re-bid. There was a good bit of discussion about that. And it's kind of just, it was pretty much disappointing that it was handled the way it was, extremely. And then the concert, there was a report on the ticket sales, and, I forget the breakdown, but, that date, there was $101,000 worth of ticket sales, and $25,000 sponsorships. Far of that, the total didn't change, I mean. But I would like to make a few comments about all this. There's been so much negativity to certain folks about this arena. We built this arena, it's our job to make it work. The states, there've been mistakes made, some of it may be we, we, it's new to this county and folks, and there's an earning curve, there'll be, there'll be mistakes made, and some people may be afraid to ask for help if they're in, you know, a bit over their head, but we need to come together and try, and do the work, because we got this one event, this one we come back every year. And this concert, it's got some bumps, and if we don't, if it don't go off very good, it's going to give a bad name, and we're never getting anything else to happen. And there's, and there's plenty of counties around us and across this state that would die to have the building we got for the amount of local money and investment that was put into that to work. There's a lot of folks are jealous about that building, whether people like it or not. But I've been on this county commission since 2006 this time, and I had another stint before that, but I spent too many years on this commission, and all we did was vote about budgets, people working on the budget, keep them raising taxes, and we never done nothing, until we lost the hospital, with any one effort made to try to figure out how to keep that building and do it, financially wise. And it's the first time in years that I have been on this commission, I feel like we've accomplished something, trying to move this county forward. Some people may think we're overestimating, but you got to do something big, grab attention to do it, and if you, we don't need this negativity and infighting, we don't need to be doing that. We need to work to bring this county forward. And same thing with our ER, we just pump the people needs and wants. Well, I had to carry my brother-in-law, had to go to ER care, last week, and it was slammed, had to sit out in the hall, get treated, because there wasn't no rooms. It'd been a lot nicer if we could have carried him out here and had him done, and he went right back home, instead of having to ride better and sit for a good while. So, I won't get off my soapbox, but it's up to us to make things better, and, and don't be sneaking around, and we don't be calling around behind folks and bringing up stuff, trying to surprise at meetings. And we said, so a lot of folks we like to bring up here to jump up, to bring something up, to make a big spectacle at the meeting, we ought to be thrown up and address it beforehand.
Commissioner, I'd like to address you, and that, I don't know if that condescending tone was targeted toward another commissioner or not, I, I put my money where my mouth's at, I fully supported, now wait a minute, I listened to every word you had to say. I want you to understand, make sure you know, everything comes with a cost, David.
I know.
You understand that we're, the next item on the agenda is borrowing money to operate with, and I understand how it got here, but you understand also that everything does come with a price. I signed, put my hand on a bottle to be a good financial steward for McNairy County, and I feel like that you're trying to throw toward me, because I brought up some issues that you know, and I know, and this whole commission and county know, need to be addressed. Nobody's doing anything negative here. What we're wanting is integrity, stewardship, and the distribution of taxpayer money, that's, that's what it's all about, without looking at a, a, a property tax and/or other taxes that's coming down the train, I mean, it's coming down the railroad, and it's going to be here. I'm trying to do everything that I can to get the most that I can, with the most efficient way that I possibly can. So I don't know if you was pointing that at me or not, but I want to make sure you understand exactly where I stand.
I understand.
Thank you.
I'm not trying to point out anybody, I just, I've been through so many negative times, many years, and nothing happened, and no attempt to do anything.
Hey, I get it. I sponsored the show, I'm a hundred percent, I'm in it.
I just get frustrated, I'm not calling anybody out by name, it's just sort of, I'm going to try to get some things off of my chest, too.
Well, maybe this ain't the place and time to do that, maybe you ought to talk to somebody after the meeting.
I might, well, call about nobody, some of these people in the audience, like I have.
This ain't the time and the place for that, David.
It seems like for other people these times.
Mayor. What we're talking about, bags that are in the trace add-ins, could you shed some light on our contract? You were creating.
Yeah, we both can, it's, it's on the agenda tonight for us to talk about, you want to talk about them?
We can, I would never do that.
On the note about integrity and what folks are talking about there, I'm only going to say this, if anybody did anything, if there's any marks, we're going to have to talk about them, so, anyway.
What does that mean?
It means that we're going to advertise that spot, that's what that means. Anyway, watershed committee, next one.
All right. The watershed committee met, and, hey, Mr. Kelly Gutten, NRCS, and he was the main patron. We had also had Weston, Isaac Weston, from Congress, and Cusco's office president. You know, we've been trying to build a, or looking at what it's going to take to divert the water from salmon so the flood. So one of those things we were looking at, Site 13 and Site 18, watershed. So he come, Mr. Gutten, stated NRCS was allocating funds from bipartisan infrastructure laws to perform watershed planning in McNairy County. NRCS extended the federal contract on April 12, 2023, obligating $1.4 million to perform the planning and the work on this study. The original scope of work was the two watersheds, Site 13 and Site 18, which have been completed in the. The original scope of work was the two watersheds, Site thirteen and Site eighteen, which have been completed to a certain extent. The meet was about NRCS requesting to rescope the project with a federal contractor to consider other flood control measures and continue the work. Pending to rescope caused inherent funding. Uh, Site thirteen and Site eighteen were remaining in the project, uh, as possible options, which will be considered at the end of the study. So what, what that means was Site thirteen, Site eighteen, after looking at it and getting involved in the study and structures and all that stuff, constructing it, going to be way too expensive for McNairy County to walk, talking in the hundreds of millions of dollars. So we want to broaden the scope to look at dry basins and widening creeks and cleaning out and all that stuff to broaden the scope of the project. Anytime you deal with the federal government, and once you have the money, you got a specific scope, and this was specific scope for Site thirteen and eighteen. Well, seeing that's a little bit unrealistic, we're hoping to look further and see what else we can do to keep salmon or McNairy County from flooding, like we haven't had. Because if we don't, business is going to start leaving, and jobs are going to start going and all that, so we've got to do something. But also, we got to be realistic and do something that we can afford to do, uh, something that grants are available out there to do, it's not in the hundreds of millions of dollars, so. We're going, we want to broaden that scope, and they have to come back, since it's outside the Site thirteen and eighteen area, we're broadening the scope on what we can do, and what to look at, what, what the study can accomplish. So we're broadening the scope, we have to have permission and okay from this commission on broadening the scope. Again, it's got to do with federal government and all that, so. Uh, that's what they, that's what he was trying to look at, and give us some other options at the end, so available to work, whatever, whatever they may say fit, that will help other than just the Site thirteen and eighteen watershed. And I don't know if you want to expand on that, or?
Yeah, they, they came to me and talked to me about it, and I told them, I think, well, we really need to get Watershed Committee to meet on it, and we also need the full commission to approve the scope change. As Keith said, thirteen and eighteen are still in the project, and there's, uh, the farm bill, believe it or not, is where the money is for the watershed. Usually when you build those, and, um, that watershed, the farm bill that has passed, and that's what they're kind of worried about, and that's, they don't want this money to run out before they get to, you know, basically, and what they're talking about doing is, is he said, widen the channels, maybe create some pockets downstream that will catch water, large bodies of water, not the waste sign, but as it goes down side of the creek, they can widen that channel and not, uh, it'll impact anything like a watershed would maybe. That's what they're talking about. Bottom line is, if we don't use this money, we're going to lose it, and we need to complete the study, it needs to be as thorough as possible. I sent out that, uh, other study some time back to everyone, so this is the next leg of that, that study that, uh, far before the engineers completed, so, here's a little. And motion carries.
So, so that being said, the motion to broaden the scope of the project from Site thirteen to eighteen to, to a new extent.
And this is not costing the county any money either, this is all federal money.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly right. They're just trying to help with the flooding issues and further resolve and all that for summer. If, if you, you know, it doesn't sound like, for instance, Site thirteen, it altered the scope of water impacting summer by eight percent. That doesn't sound like much, but when you look at their model, and you look at the pieces of property that would not flood as a result of that eight percent, it's huge, folks. So eight percent is a lot of water there that, and we ask questions too with them about the other watersheds, if they will be maintained and the water being regulated like they should be. So we're working on that too. What we already have, and we'll make sure what we already have in place is functioning at maximum capacity it can do. So we're trying to get those answers. Any other questions?
Mr. Terry, I'm not against it by no means. But with my connection, NRCS and Weston City Real Estate. It's almost impossible to widen channels. I mean, when, when I want to fix a creek bank the length of this corral, I am restricted into six weeks that I'm not messing with the breeding habitats of crockets. I mean, I'm not trying to throw, be negative about this, but it ain't happening.
Well, with those two entities, Weston City Real Estate will be involved with this, and they have been at the table, he wasn't able to be there the other night, and David Black was the minute every meeting and kind of thing, but. Anyway, with those two entities, if there's anything that can be done with this money, you know, they, they make it happen, and that's, I mean, I hate to see us turn that money back, and.
I know we got a problem.
We need to do all we can today while we have that, that money available.
And we're not committing anything when the study's done, when it's done, we have the study, but we don't, we're not, we don't have to do anything with, we don't have to act on it, but. So it's not, we're not committing any dollars to the study even when it's done, it's just giving us information about. He said that one county that we're with, they had like thirty-something options when they started, and they worked it down to three, so. She's kind of giving us all the options that are available, and then which ones will be most costly to take it, just by the way I understood it.
But right now, the way it stands, we can guess, we don't know. So we've got the money to do it, we just don't, we, we, we can guess again, but we don't know, so. What's going on? I'm only trying to tell you, Eric, we're coming on the vibe, basically, like a common on the vibe. Our drain system, from starting fingers down to McNairy, all the way to, in the Arden County, we're dumping the river just downstream from Haynes. It's ten foot less deep in my forty-seven year life back. And until we legalize dredging in the United States, my farms are going to fall, I'm flooding the Egypt, the city of Elvers is going to flood. But, uh, y'all, y'all do the study, I'm, I'm not opposed to the study. You need to get rid of water, make the ditch bigger. That's the way it works, either catch it above, or let the, let the outlet be bigger. But common sense doesn't seem to work very far in this realm we're talking about. And I've spent a lot of time in this realm. But anyway. Thank you for letting me share my opinion.
Should we have a motion on the floor, or do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve the scope change from NRCS, for foot control in McNairy County. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, everyone in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Aye.
Want to oppose? That's me, call a rule. Call a rule, please.
Albert Harris?
Yes.
David McCullough?
Yes.
Chad Belton?
Yes.
Terry McCormick? Pamela Carroll?
No.
Tricia Underwood?
No.
Keith Jernigan?
Yes.
Jay Weatherford?
Yes.
Adam Toll?
Yes.
Brenda Colley?
Yes.
Philip Ponsworth?
Yes.
Jeff Kelly?
Yes.
Nikki Moore?
Yes.
Brad Hunt?
Yes.
Doug Knight?
Yes.
Willie Taft?
Yes.
Fourteen to two was the vote, motion carries. Also, you have a copy that Jared Kelly brought by, left with me, looks kind of like that, too, may not be colored, but it gives some pretty interesting facts, and Randy being recently received, they spent a little over three million dollars in McNairy County doing something last year, so. That's pretty interesting, you know, think about a lot of agencies, my checks are good, they do what they did. That could be anything from cattle waters, or whatever, I guess, anyway, interesting.
That concludes the watershed, of course.
Thank you, sir. All right, yeah.
Budget Committee? Yes, sir. Budget Committee met, uh, last week on the fifteenth, Tuesday night. Now, the first item of discussion was the budget amendments. These are a quarterly approval. Um, we had one discrepancy on there, did that get? We talked about Tricia or?
We're, we're, we don't want to hit fund balance, we're going to move it within the budget, so it won't fund balance, yes, we discussed it, yes.
Okay, the, yes, the copy that you have in your packet, um, I'm sure everybody's has declined not approved on the jail fund balance, so without, uh, that being approved, the rest of those for Fund one zero one, I will make a motion to say be approved as presented.
Our motion on the floor to approve Fund one oh one budget amendment. And second. That's taken by Chad Belton. Any other questions or discussions about the amendments on one oh one?
That's still the exceptional jail crew.
Yes. Any other question? Hearing none, everyone in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
Uh, next item was the Highway Department, which that has already been approved, uh, that's basically a housekeeping issue, we have, we appropriated that money in the budget, um, which was done, but this amendment took care of moving it to the, uh, right line item, so we can actually use it. Um, the next item was the five hundred thousand tax anticipation note, and, uh, I was on the record saying me and this young lady here to my right, um, who have been here for seventy-two years, I think. Uh, I, I remember when we said, um, that we have, we have just always done this. Um, there's two years in the past that we did not, um, one year we did not apply for it. Do you remember what year that was? Um, and another year we did apply for it, but we never did use it. Um, but for the most part, this is, um, a lot of counties, not only us, a lot of counties have to do it, borrow money to wait on taxes. Um, and in the past, uh, recent years, we have not done it, um, also accounting to the COVID money, which we have received, which has helped us. Um, it's a large part of this project that we have going on, that everyone's so passionate about. But, uh, this year, just as a precaution, um, if we do have to use it, we're probably not going to have to use much of it, if I'm correct, Mr. Mayor.
This year, you know, family has talked to me about it a few times in family meetings, and, though, this year's interest rates are crazy in the respect, is it worth the mortgage companies to wait and pay that early in November, December, or rather wait for the first year, will they make more on income tax or interest? So that did impact seven, eight hundred thousand dollars, so. And also the monogram money, you know?
Yeah, and the monogram money, which, which we give two and a half million dollars to, uh, recently, um, to keep them in our county. But, uh, with that, I have something else that I left. Yes, with that, I will make a motion to approve a five hundred thousand dollar tax anticipation note.
And a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Take, take, any questions or discussions? Hearing none, everyone in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Oppose.
Albert Harris?
Yes.
David McCullough?
Yes.
Chad Belton?
Yes.
Terry McCormick? Pamela Carroll?
No.
Tricia Underwood?
No.
Keith Jernigan?
Yes.
Jay Weatherford?
Yes.
Adam Toll?
Yes.
Brenda Colley?
Yes.
Philip Ponsworth?
No.
Jeff Kelly?
Yes.
Nikki Moore?
Yes.
Brad Hunt?
Yes.
Doug Knight?
Yes.
Willie Taft?
Yes.
Eric, please, any motion carries?
Next item that requires action, next item was the ice skating panel bids, uh, we've already been included at tonight. The fire department bids, um, I want everyone to listen closely, a hundred percent, correct?
Am I correct?
No tax dollar. Okay, that's the best, the best news I've had all night. Now, yes, this is a bid from Safe Industries. Um, they currently have a, for any questions, I'll let you take the address, so. Now, currently have a relationship with this company, and that was the, uh, bid that they felt needed to be accepted, um, for the air packs in the amount of thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. As a motion to approve, Mr. Clark?
Second. Most of Jay Weatherford to approve, especially Nikki Moore. All right, I'm sorry. Only have a second, I'm hoping, any questions or discussions, I'm here to talk. Hearing none, everyone in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Next item is the, uh, washer and dryer for the turnout gear, that is also included in that grant money, um, which is to be a hundred percent for a total of, that is freight shipped our door, um, from Sidens Market, Sidens Martin, and if I'm correct, we already have a relationship with them, with them guys. And, uh, it's worked out very well for eleven thousand and seventy-three dollars. That is a motion to approve, Mr. Clark?
Motion to approve the washer and dryer bid, a hundred percent grant, report for, have a second.
Second.
Second by Nikki Moore. Second by Nikki Moore, any questions? Hearing none, everyone in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
That concludes the report from the Budget Committee, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and thank you all. And a lot of committee meetings later, in a week. The next item on the agenda will be the E nine one one interlocal agreement. And if you have that proposed, and if you're there, the total is eighty-two thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars and fourteen cents, to be made before annual solace of twenty thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. Sheriff is chairing that committee, if you have any questions, I'm sure he can add that.
Well, I have a question. When we have contracts, this is just like the, the solid waste bid and everything, when we have a contract that starts on July the first and ends June the twentieth of the following year, why are we approving contracts in the middle of October?
We just got it approved, we can do it.
I understand, but why was it not before July first?
No, dated nine nineteen twenty-four, the contract to Lake County Commission, but. I don't know, I don't know the answer. Anyway, and entertaining motion to approve the contract presented.
Second.
Motion for Willie Taft, we have a second. Second, by David McCullough, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, everyone in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. All right, next item, skip down the list, there was already done one, nine hundred and sixty-six budget amendments, tax anticipation, we need to complete, be the lease agreement with Tennessee Law Enforcement Board Foundation. You have a copy of that, we're trying to direct that lease. Creative directed that lease. Let the sheriff, one, to answer any questions you might have. Any questions in discussion?
I thought we originally had talked about a hundred years, it's a fifty-year lease, is that just?
Fifty years plus a lot of another fifteen.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure, fifty years down the road, that you're still leaving running that title for a hundred years.
Gotcha.
Not a lot, but I would say.
All right, anything to vote to approve the lease agreement, Tennessee Law and Forefront and More.
Some may.
Motion by Dan Carroll and second by Jeff Kelly, any questions in discussion? Here, you know, everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
Can I say this, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just so y'all know, with the approval of the lease, we'll start groundbreaking as soon as we can get the contractors here to do it. We are within three thousand, what? $3,800 of our initial fundraising goal, which was almost $100,000. We've done that in basically an eight-month period, so we're, we're there. I mean, we've gotten this far, we're going to get to $3,800. So we should, you should start seeing dirtwork pretty soon, concrete being poured and all the granite sand. Now it's down to the housekeeping part, making sure we don't mess up. Make sure that every name and every agency and every day is right. So we're excited about it, it'll be good for the county. Thank y'all for the lease, too.
I told the sheriff on the on, if they'd raised as much as could, we'd help for that. This would be a good opportunity to help them, folks.
I'll make a motion, we'll give thirty years on it.
A second.
Second by Tricia Underwood, most by Oliver Harris, or second by Tricia Underwood, any questions in discussion? Here, you know, everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
That would make me cry now.
We need to start building that, right?
We were going to start it anyway.
I understand.
It'll probably be more than $3,800 in tax revenue.
I believe that a hundred percent.
The next thing on the agenda is Trace Atkins Contract. If you remember, we had this piece of paper from before that was shared with everyone. And in the process of all that, we have written a note here about what happened. Now, I'll read you what it says. It says, "In talking to Trace Atkins, many have seen about the contract. Labor's entity contracted for a $50,000 deposit and $100,000 final payout for the November event. The initial discussion about the event was between Russell Eagle, an employee that is no longer associated with the management company at the time of the contract." In other words, at the time this was grown up. "When discussing the contract, the company was not open to a $50,000 deposit and splitting the proceeds. They delivered the contract that you have currently, that I sent out this past week. They delivered that contract, a copy of that contract. Under the initial proposal that was given, it was proposed to split, which the show sold out, which would have been about $45,000, sending it back to the county. If you look at what I've written here today and the numbers involved in it, under the contract that was presented, now, the current contract, the county was gaining $85,500 instead of $45,000. Now, understand, $30,500, that is sponsorship dollars. So it's still more than it was the other way. And that was the reason for, well, two reasons. One, the reason that I signed that contract was I understood that when this was approved, we were approving moving forward with the whole thing. Well, the minutes say that we were approving $50,000, which is accurate, but again, I understood we were approving the entire thing. And that, the test that I told you about some time back, you know, that I thought we'd already done that. But at any rate, it's a better deal for the other one because you're not splitting the profit. And we don't have to give them anything out of the sponsorships we sold. Now, to clarify their sponsorships, we have $25,500 back. I have another $5,000 check to pick up at Henderson when I get an opportunity to go pick it up. So that'll be the $30,500. But at any rate, it breaks out a little different. And in the back of that contract, there was two pages attached to the back of that contract. And even some of it was scattered throughout the contract. You saw some circles made and some initials and so on like that on the contract. The hotel rooms and stuff, we're not going to have to do any hotel rooms. They've taken that out of it now. And actually, we, since they took it out, we've got a private individual that's going to donate a venue. That is in sell before that, so we're not going to have to do anything with that. We're not going to have any on-site dressing rooms. The catering is going to be furnished by an individual, whatever the menu they choose, that saves $2,500. The hotel room is $600. And no bus supplies are being required, that was an initial part of that initial contract. I don't know why, or what the cost would have been with that, they didn't say. But quite a lift, that's the, the cost, it's close to the end of the cure. They don't allow that stuff sitting on the bus, they said. But in all the sponsorship money that remain in the county, we can use the sponsorship money to do the stage lighting and sound with the meeting we've got coming to Thursday night. But, you know, with all honesty, I thought we were approving the entire handover here. And in fact, that is not the case. But anyway, I wanted to ask y'all to approve the contract that we sent out, or I sent out this past week. And let's get this show done, get it behind us, and let everybody get behind it and push it to the extent that we can make it as successful as it possibly can be.
How many seats have we sold?
Well, besides the sponsorship, I got this this afternoon, man, there's 1,168 besides the sponsorships. And there's quite a few of those, but it's a total of 102,100 is what we have in the bank, basically.
Is that after the Ticketmaster percentage come out?
This is our part.
That's accurate.
This is our part.
How many, how many seats, Mayor, was in the? I know he requested so many in the front, three row, two row, three row?
Yeah, that was the sponsorships that were sold.
Okay.
$1,500 sponsorships.
Right, and there was 300 of those seats total, right?
Yes.
So are we double dipping in that?
No, we're not. That's what I said, this, now, I talked to, the guy's name was Kyle this afternoon, and, no, Nick, I'm sorry, Nick. Kyle was about the same, but anyway, I talked to Nick and he said that this was the number of what we sold, seats we've sold, besides what you're talking about. In other words, if he bought a sponsorship package worth $1,500, you got four seats with it, that's not counting those. So this number here, he said we were about halfway, about fifty percent on ticket sales, what he said.
It says 300 seats in a total of 30,900.
That's what he's talking about.
But we give away some of those seats for the sponsorship.
That's what I'm, if you paid $1,500 for sponsorship, you got four seats. $1,500 got you four seats.
Those seats are already, that funding is included on the sponsorship line item, not on the seat?
That's right, that's right. It's not included in this number here, according to him today, what he told me. So that means it's about 1,500, 1,600 seats that's been sold so far.
And your numbers are showing based off of a thirty, I'm looking at 3,300 seats.
That's right. I did the same thing, I did the same thing that they sent us initially, that y'all looked at here for. And I'm not trying to do anything or say anything, I just tried to do both comparisons, you know, to, so that the comparisons would be equal and so you could see the mindset. See, I just didn't think we needed to bring this back to y'all because I thought if we approved this, we would have done. And it was ready to move on.
I thought that approval was the $100,000, Mayor.
Well, it's $100,000, but it, then you got all of the other, where you split the cost, you split the proceeds 50/50, and the other stuff too, you know, so yeah, it's $100,000, but it ended up being a little bit more than it does this way.
I understand. We're, we gotta do some selling between now and next.
I agree, and that's what he said, too.
There's 1,168, you got a proposal here, thirty, thirty-one, I'm sorry, 3,300.
That's exactly right.
In eleven days, actually ten days.
Sure.
Ten days, correct?
We approved that first one, it was $50,000, it holds the date of November the sixth.
Anyway, we need a motion, we need a motion to approve that, to get this behind us and move it through. Motion there, first?
Second.
Motion by Jane Winters for second, ladies and gentlemen, to approve this contract.
And the total amount's 150, is that correct?
Yeah, 150. It's right there in the left sheet that I gave you, everything. All right, motion for second on the floor, any other questions? No, call it over.
Willie Taft?
Yes.
Doug Knight?
Yes.
Brad Hunt?
Yes.
Nikki Moore?
Yes.
Jeff Kelly?
Yes.
Philip Hollisworth?
Yes.
Brenda Colley?
Yes.
Adam Toel?
Yes.
Jay Weatherford?
Yes.
Keith Jernigan?
Yes.
Tricia Underwood?
No.
Pam Carroll?
No.
Terry McCormick?
Yes.
Chad Belton?
Yes.
David McCullough?
Yes.
Oliver Harris?
Yes.
What can do? Motion carries, thank you all, appreciate your confidence and we'll work with it, we should move it. I think that I saw Ms. Frankie Hill and Jimmy Forsyth come in, is that correct? You all asked to address the county commission, would you like to do that just now?
I'd like to ask the county commissioners to help me get a road fixed in front of my house. It's been dedicated, supposedly a dedicated road since I bought the property. And the people that lived on it before me said it was a dedicated road. The people I bought the property from said it was a dedicated road. And now, as long as I've lived there, I've had about a half of a gravel truck loaded gravel put in a hole in it, and that was when Otis Madlock was in office. So you can know how long that is. Well, with all the bad rains and things we've had, it has washed it down to the gray part of the gully. And it's, that's what it is, it's just a gully down there now. And I'd like to talk to you about fixing it for me, if you can.
Where is this at, ma'am?
It's off of Brooks Road.
It's 158 Brooks Road.
My number is 158 Brooks Road.
That's where David Goodness lives, that road across town from David Goodness, where it's at. Party had surgery last Wednesday, and you can't beat her, but anyway, I went out to her house to look, my sister called and we'll come and look, and the problem is, her address is Brooks Road. But the house is a quarter, half mile, I don't know how far, didn't measure it, but it's off of Brooks Road. And it's not on Kendrick Road.
But when I bought the property, I was told it was a dedicated county road. The name on it now, that was on the deeds and everything, when the property was sold out there, was Kendrick Road. And that's what we have to go on.
The problem we have, ma'am, is, as I explained to you, that out there, the roads have a tendency, can't do work. If it's, if it's not approved by the county highway department and not been sent to the Comptroller's Office of the State of Tennessee, the road commissioner cannot do work on it. And that road is not on the county road list, and...
Well, how can I get it approved?
It would have to be brought up to standard, but yes, ma'am, it could be approved if you're willing to bring the road up to standard the first time and get the road commissioner to make that request to the road board, to the full county commission, it could be, yes, ma'am. But you'll have to bring it up.
Well, I tried every way I know to get it, and I can't get anyone to help me get the road fixed.
Well, we, we can't fix it because, I mean, the road commissioner, it's against the law for him to work on private property and it's not on the county road list, that's the, that's the issue. The only way you could get him to work on the road ever is if the road is brought up to highway standard specifications. Then the highway department could adopt the road, the full county commission could accept it, send it to the Comptroller's Office for approval, then they could do work on the road.
In other words, there's no way I can get the road.
I'll ask you some questions, ma'am. Does anyone else utilize this route other than you?
Well, Frankie Hill does, and I do. There's four driveways, four driveways off the road. And then I have people coming and going, she has people coming and going. And she has a shop that's on her property that they only use when her son comes home to visit. But we have, I have garbage pickup, mail carrier, and she could have the same thing, but she chooses not to. But I have to have it because I cannot, I'm not able to carry garbage up to Brooks Road. And I like to pick up my mail in, in front of my house because you never know who's going to go through your mailbox.
Ma'am, how long have you lived there?
Pardon?
How long have you lived there?
Almost, probably 35 years. And it's never been, you know, repaired. Otis Madlock, a little dab of gravel out there, and dumped it in a hole in the road, and that's all I've ever been able to get done.
Well, Mayor, you're saying she lives on Kendrick Road, but her address is Brooks Road?
Her address, her address is Brooks Road.
My address is Brooks Road.
And Brooks Road is the main road there in front of David Goodness' house, wiped off, asphalt, I think that's what.
The road that I'm on comes off of Brooks, down there.
And the house where Frankie Hill lives presently was owned by Jimmy Harrison at one time, and then Robert Forsyth. And it has always been a dedicated road, but it has never been worked on. She got the gravel, so if you will tell us exactly what we need to do, we'll go through those channels.
You go to the road board and the road, the party can give you the specifications, you can go back and repair the road to meet county specifications, to be a county road, to be effective as county road. Right, Chris, that's the process. The place to start would be the road board.
The road board?
Yes, ma'am.
Who is the road board? Where is?
Well, what you're talking about in 1999 is there's a list of roads, and length of every road that's approved by the state that county maintains. And that road list goes back years. It's been, it's probably the last, I can't even remember, we haven't added a road in years. And I'll tell you, I don't know who you bought the property from, but in past cases, I've had readiness before. And we've had people that made roads and told people, they were, they were county roads, the county would maintain them. And they were never added to the road list, they were never surveyed off and indebted to the county to maintain them. They were told that when they bought roads, especially this place in, up around Beauty Hill, Northern County. They were told that, but it, they were just told that, it never was done, it wasn't followed up on. And if it's not on that list, we're limited by state law about what you can do to get it on that list. Unfortunately, we've had cases where folks were told and believed that, but the procedures were never went through. And there was no, no survey offer, been deemed to the county for maintenance, to be maintained. And I don't know, your case, I have to go by, look at the road list and go look at it. I talk hard and ill, but in a lot of ways, we can look at it, but sometimes our hands are tied by the way the state mandates, how we have to do, operate and do things.
Okay, my biggest concern is that she is a cancer patient.
I understand.
And I have had to call the ambulance a couple of times. It's just extremely difficult for them to get down through there, and I know that's a big vehicle. But it's hard, and you have to go down in one hole, dig yourself... But it's hard and you have to go down in one hole, dig yourself out. I do it every day because I live there also. And it's just, you know, I see gravel being delivered everywhere, all over the county. And don't say anything because I've seen it.
Yep.
And it is county vehicles. And she can't even get some gravel out there to fill some holes up. So, if somebody will tell me exactly what I need to do, we will do it. So, if it's you, please come out.
We will, we will look, investigate it. And I will come out to your place, look and talk to her. And for the other reference, over toward West Shiloh, there on twenty-two, from the four-way stop, going toward the park, there's a bunch of houses on the left up over that little church. You may know where that's at. And those folks, they built several houses in there. And they wanted the road paved and maintained. There was an instance like that where the road was built. And they built the houses and the procedures, and there was no follow-up on getting that converted over to the county. So, it's one of those areas that gets limbo. I don't know.
It's like a multi-owner driveway.
Yeah. And they finally decided that they didn't want to do it. But I've heard, there've been several cases like this where people were told one thing, but that wasn't what happened.
Well, I invite anyone in this room to come out. And especially if you come out and it's raining. Unless you come out in four-wheel drive, it's hard to get in and out. And that is pathetic for someone who is a taxpayer, who's lived in Magnaery County all her life, worked here all her life. And it's just, I mean, it's, we've been told by too many people, it's a dedicated road.
Well, I'll come after and look at it.
Okay.
I'll come with you, Braden. If I'm out of gravel, you haul it, Braden. Okay. We'll fix it. We'll solve it.
I just want to promise you something. We may not be able to live.
Well, it would not. It's just to have somebody else come out and see what we drive in and out. And hers has always, it's been bad for about four years, really bad.
And we get it, we'll get it. We'll work on it.
Frankie's is just now starting to deteriorate. So.
How long the driveway, Larry?
Most that's four, five hundred foot down the avenue, at least.
Let me know when you get ready to. I want to help out there a little bit. I've seen his work.
But the problem is, it's going to be expensive. It's going to be expensive to bring that road up to standard.
I understand.
And that's, that's the issue. That, you know, if you're going to make it meet standard, well, we can't take it if it doesn't. The highway work can't.
But the mail carrier's been going down there? The mail carrier goes down there? He comes up to the house. He comes through.
Yes.
And he's a client. And she lived there thirty-five years? She said she lived there for thirty-five years. Yes. We used to have to, when I first lived out there in Florida, we had to carry the big dumpster up to the main road. And then put the garbage in and then bring it back home at night after the garbage was dumped. The mail, she's had eight mailboxes up there. So, the postmaster just told them that they can, she can put a mailbox up there and then you can bring it out of the box. And she's not able to carry the garbage to the end of the road. So.
We'll work on it, okay? We'll work on it. Thank you, Jerry. We'll work on it. You have in your packet also there a letter from the United States Postal Service that's in regard to the letter that we all signed the resolution that passed and said to them. I guess it's kind of an apology, but it's way out of it. It looked, and it's there and it's on the mind and Kustoff and they were working on it. Of course, Congressman Kustoff is. And you also have in the packet, quick lane D, if you wonder what that is. For the ER site out there on the library side where the canopy would be for the drop-off and pickup point. There's a lot of erosion with that pipe. Sheriff's were out there and looked at it once, two, but it's a mess. In order to fix that, we had to ask the state of Tennessee for some of the property on the roadway there. And what this is, they granted that to us and give us. Anyway. And Craig, you want to make a statement about something?
That's true. Uh, you know, normally when you approve a contract, it goes in with Ross's office, the public record. Because of the confidentiality clause in the contract, if you approve for Atkins, I suggest that we not put it in Ross's office, even the mayor's office at this point until we get approval from them. I'll ask them for approval to put that in Ross's office. They may or may not agree to that. But until, and they won't do it after the contract's over, they may say no altogether. But I just think because the confidentiality clause is in the contract, if we think of public record, we violate that confidentiality clause. I just want to make sure everybody's okay.
You know, besides the county commissioner, if we share it with anyone, we do the same. The notes for today is Raymond, Jay, Bowler the second, Chris, Tom, Farisha, Marvin, Jill, Hollisworth, Crystal, Ann Moore, Linda, Diane, Penny.
Motion to approve the.
Say it.
Motion to approve the notes as presented. I'll be the second with the cap. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, everyone in favor, say aye. Anyone to vote? Motion carries. Public comments, any public comments? I will say, if any of you guys want to help with the setup, breakdown, setup at the Ag Center for the Trace event, you know, that's a good way for us to save a dollar or two. It's just a good chance, and I know we, well, don't get worked enough, spending enough hours waiting home. But it'd be very helpful, anybody that wants to volunteer some time and save some time. Free, I would say.
Yes, anybody who would like to help, we would absolutely love to have you help us. I need several. We have some already, but I need as many as I can get right now. So, it also, again, give us the idea of what our overall cost will be if we can have people here locally instead of having to hire people outside.
Anything else, tell the board, please, now.
You want to explain about the helicopter service?
Well, the helicopter service, it's the same, hospital wing and whatever.
Air it back?
Air it back, it's the same. They're the same there. Same people own it now. So, you transport from one, you transport to the other. And I've got some little flyers that want to see what it is.
I know we signed the contract with wings, right?
Yep.
And now they be aired back. But you actually fly it.
Actually, air trades that work. But in most states.
So, it's still covered? Still covered on the same contract?
Yes, we will. Anything else, anybody?
Motion, Jerry. Say it.
Thank you all.